Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. This is a regular meeting. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting, is not a public hearing. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come in along with a set of the materials that we will be considering in public session today. Item number two on our agenda is approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on July the 12th. Do you entertain any modifications or corrections to those minutes? If there are no changes or corrections, is there a motion?
Yeah, move the document.
Second and all in favor? Item number three, first selectmen updates. Quickly to review some past events, on July 16th, there was a promotion of four firefighters to the position of lieutenant. Those individuals, Mike Stanko, Christopher Pavella, Russell Paltoff, and Dan Natal, were elevated on the 16th. And the reason for this is that through the budget process this year, we were able to secure funding to add a lieutenant to the tower ladder, which is stationed in central Greenwich. All of our six town-owned fire facilities, fire stations, have an engine. On that engine are three firefighters. One of those three are lieutenants, and that's the staffing model and supervision that was assigned. That was not the case with the tower ladder. There's been a longstanding view that there should be someone of elevated responsibility on that, given its function, given its importance, and also it's the most expensive piece of apparatus. So this is the reason why we had this promotional ceremony, and of course, based upon shifting you need to elevate four to have coverage throughout. So we wish them well, and again, we look forward to the benefits of that. On the 16th of July, there was a meeting of the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities in Greenwich. This is one of the ad hoc committees that established several years ago. The focus of the meeting on the 16th was a presentation by Lori Contadino of the Greenwich Senior Center, and specifically talking about their age-friendly designation certification. So she provided that background to the members of the committee, took questions. In addition, we had discussions about ADA compliance as it related to the United States Postal Service. I want to really acknowledge Dr. Berry, who is our town's ADA coordinator. For those who do not know, Dr. Allen Berry is our Commissioner of Human Services. And he was instrumental in working with the Postal Service to move a relay box on Hamilton Avenue that was impeding access for folks. That was in the corner of Hamilton Avenue in Booth Place. There was some press about it, and again, appreciate Don Fortunato, who brought it to the attention of the town, and Dr. Berry for facilitating its correction. On Friday tomorrow, there will be an acknowledgement in celebration of the 28th anniversary of President George H.W. Bush signing the American with Disabilities Act. The committee is hosting this at Byram Park Pool at 9:45 a.m. The reason for that location, of course, is not only is it new, but it is a fully ADA-compliant facility, and the committee wants to acknowledge and celebrate that wonderful amenity. On July 16th, the Chamber of Commerce released its annual business survey. This survey was sent to their membership. I believe they had 100 respondents, and it was consistent with some of the feedback we have received through various citizen surveys we do every other year, as well as a recent permit process improvement survey. One of the more salient points that's been reported in the news is that in the commercial business district, the vacancy rate is less than 10 percent. And this is the first time it stood at that rate in a decade. So Greenwich continues to be sought after particularly for financial service boutique finance offices. What does the business community say is their most pressing concern? Local planning and zoning. I think we heard a little bit about that the other night in different application and We had a presentation on the 16th concerning the Permit Process Improvement Initiative. This was undertaken through an allocation of funds to conduct an independent review by an outside firm. This took into consideration all of the departments that have some relationship to issuance of permits for purposes of approval of utilization of your property, whether it be residential or business. And the focal point is how can you make it more efficient, more user-friendly? The overall outcome of this is that there was generally high rating for the employees that performed the services, but that there could be improvement in the overall clarity and consistency of the documentation that you're asked to submit. That shown through in a metric, five being the highest approval, one being the lowest. The rankings were generally in the ranges of three in a third, two upwards into four. But when it came to those issues about clarity of information, consistency, those were in the threes. And so that's dictated clearly a need for improvement. Some of the things that are proposed in terms of the implementation is to accept credit cards, to unify counter hours, to improve signage. And that's all designed to begin from July to September of quarter one. The next would be to continue with customer service training, better establish a queuing system, and a customer fast lane. Beginning in 2019, we're looking to have online application trade permits, online record access, and review paper forms. And that's going to be specifically tied to two things. One, the implementation of a new software program called Municity, and our new website, which takes effect on August the 8th, Barbara?
August 8th.
Yeah, August 8th. And that's going to be GreenwichCT.gov, changed from currently .org. By the middle of next year, there'll be an ongoing assessment tool, and then they're looking in two years to have video tutorials, which would provide customers, concierge-like service, where you can go and click on and hear firsthand how you would go about undertaking your particular project. So that's the net result of all this. It also ties into what we hear particularly from those who use the building zoning processes, mostly developers, expediters, land use attorneys, tradespeople. The survey that was done specifically asked those people who use the service. And just want to share with you statistically what we had as a response to that. There were a total of 460 total responses during the period of December 4th through 2017 through March 9th. 292 had usable data. So it was not an easy thing to get people to do. There was incentives. There was actually a small incentive. If you conducted the survey, you were entered into a raffle for, I think, was it a $25 gift certificate? So not anything great, but to entice people the importance that this should be done. On July 14th, this relates to community events, we had the Bastille Day Flag Raising here, and this was sponsored by Aliance France. There was also the Greenwich Point Conservancy Beach Ball, once again raising funds to 100% fund the restoration of the historic buildings out at Greenwich Point. In addition, there was the Greenwich Founder's Day, celebrating the 378th year of the founding of the town, and this year took on a new significance in that there was the unveiling of the Feek Ferris House, which is in Old Greenwich, the oldest documented home now within the town. And the fact that this is now open for viewing by the public by appointment, but it's a private owner who did this work in concert with the Greenwich Point Conservancy. So wonderful to see that antiquity preserved for future generations. On July 17th, we received a letter from Senior Senator Richard Blumenthal acknowledging the town on earning the Tree City USA recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation. Greenwich is one of 18 Connecticut communities to merit this accomplishment, and it certainly ensures our population has a healthy community forest. We appreciate the senator's acknowledgement. This week, I met with a Greenwich resident. Her name is Kelly Zagger, and she resides in Old Greenwich. She is working to launch an organization called TEAL. And TEAL stands for Tell Every Amazing Lady. And it's about providing awareness about ovarian cancer. Her story is a very poignant one, sad. She lost her mom, who is 46, and she's in a position now, having her family of her own, to take on civic engagement, and she's aligned with this organization, with the CEO. And she's looking to have Greenwich have a program on this. So expect to see more of that coming forward, but anything that we can do to provide awareness about health-related issues and early detection, we will do. Finally, this is something that we all need to be very cognizant of, and that is water. Water in many different facets. The water we consume, also the water that comes through the pipes. Aquarian Water Company has issued notification that they will be cleaning water mains in Greenwich from Sunday, July 29th through Friday, September 7th. The project should last the six weeks, and during that time, you will notice drops in pressure and some discoloration in your water. The discoloration results from temporary disturbance of the water flow, which stirs up naturally occurring minerals that settle in water mains. According to Aquarian, you may want to store tap water in the refrigerator ahead of time for drinking and cooking, and if your water is discolored, delay washing clothes. Prior to reusing, resuming use, you should run your cold water faucets until the water appears clear. Detailed street information will be available at 1-800-203-7000. You can also visit their website, AquarianWater.com, and sign up for their alert listings. July 29th, they're just going to be in Coscove and Riverside. August 5th, Coscove, Riverside. 12th of August, Riverside, Old Greenwich. 19th of August, Riverside, Old Greenwich. August 26th, Riverside, Coscove. And September 2nd, it says East Greenwich, and I still don't know what that means, if they've listed all the other locations as being east.
It's from what they explained to me, it is south of the Post. It's in the area of the Post Road.
North of the Post?
North of the Post Road, thank you. I don't have my direction straight, but north of the Post Road.
So we will depend upon the press to report this out. Clearly, I've noticed this over the last several weeks at my home, the water being discolored, and I didn't know why frankly. But needless to say, to me, it's a problem because if you're not expecting it, and then you wind up with bad tasting water, and also your clothing discolored, or you're not happy. This? Was this yesterday or the day before?
This was all yesterday.
Yesterday.
It happened before.
I'm just saying, personally speaking, my water's been discolored, I would say, the last couple of weeks. But that's not for attribution. I'm just saying, like, I noticed it. But you have to be looking at it very carefully. Another thing that's great here is that we'll be celebrating the 40th anniversary of the Greenwich Youth Conservation Program on Tuesday, July 31st, also at the Byram Park Pool. For those of you in and around the Town Hall, you may notice a large number of sizable SUVs, either black or white. They often have out-of-state plates, and if you see young people getting out of them, those are the youth conservation kids. They're out there working through our Parks Department, clearing vines and branches and the parks. They do a great job. It's been in existence for 40 years. They receive a stipend in and around, I want to say, $250 for the week. And it is multi-beneficial in terms of providing them some small monetary compensation, so a job as well as teaching them the importance of maintaining the natural environment. And we applaud Christina Nappi in Human Services, who's overseen this program for a number of years.
Mary Hill is also very involved.
And also to Green and Clean. Just as a side note, a meeting that Selectmen, Littback, and I attended on Tuesday evening before the planning and zoning pertained specifically to their proposed text amendments. This board unanimously concurred that this was a subject matter of deep interest to our citizens, its impact on our neighborhoods, quality of life. We requested they delay action until the fall so that it gave people ample time to fully understand its impact. They did respond to us and delay the specific amendment related to the Florya Ratio for Educational Institutions.
They actually withdrew that.
They withdrew it, thank you. So they withdrew that. They also kept open the record so that they'll continue to take comments. We were very pleased to be there. It was longer than we perhaps anticipated, but one of the compliments I'd like to give is to really Kate DeLuca for recognizing the importance, bringing forward an attorney from Robinson &amp; Cole, I want to say Bob Smith?
Madison.
Who provided really a clear overview for the residents in attendance. And I think we finally got to a place where people's emotions subsided, their minds opened to understanding what it is that's at play, and I think we're in a good place as it relates to discourse about a very important subject. So while we were doing that, our colleague here drew the long straw. He went to a meeting down in Pemberwick, and I'm going to let him talk about that.
Actually, the meeting was at the Civic Center in Glenville, and it dealt with the flooding control project that has been going on for years and years and years. It was hosted by the Department of Public Works, and the Army Corps of Engineers were there. Early on in the meeting, Jim Michaels said that we had to be out of the Civic Center by nine o'clock, and that included what he had to say, what the Army Corps of Engineers had to say, public questions, and then a period after. So it was very, very tight. Basically, the Army Corps of Engineers went through the history of what has been done down there. They talked about what they were planning on doing, which is to take out the two bridges that are down on the circle, and to put a new bridge in that is higher and doesn't have the arches, which impedes the flow of water when there is a flood. They are not going to do any dredging. Well, they are going to do some dredging, but they're not going to dredge the Caroline Pond. They're going to dredge around where the bridge is right now, where some sediment has collected. This meeting opened the public comment period for this project. That will close sometime in August. I don't remember the date. There are several other steps that are in there, and then it will go to an Assistant Secretary of the Army for funding, and it gets thrown in with every other project that is in the country. And the most critical projects will be approved. So there's no guarantee that this will take place, but at least it's a step in the right direction. There were about 50 people there, I would say. And I was home in time to watch the P&amp;Z on television.
What was the mood, for lack of a better word, or the reaction generally at this thing?
Well, the people that were there basically were Pemberwick people, and they were hopeful but skeptical.
Just to add one thing to what Peter said, I totally agree with the comment regarding Katie's presentation. I think the thing that I would note is that even though it was certainly longer than you and I anticipated, and maybe than a lot of other people anticipated, but that was precisely the kind of thing they should have done candidly in the first instance. Exactly. And hopefully, hopefully, that was a learning experience because they really created a lot of unnecessary and unwelcome agita from people, which could have been avoided. And hopefully, they'll learn that in their zest to avoid boring people with lots of detail, they also can't ignore the fact that people do want to know and understand.
Right. But in their defense, as they said, they thought that they were just sharing a very minor kind of a detail.
You start messing around with FAR on schools, you're not dealing with minor details.
Well said. I mean, it was, yeah. Well said. So thank you for that. Moving on to old business, we have on our agenda today what is a resolution that was drafted for us in concert with the Town Council. For those who are familiar with the subject of Greenwich High School and the utilization of its stadium and lighting surrounding the stadium, there was back in 2003 stipulation and order of judgment from the Connecticut Superior Court as it related to utilization of that facility in terms that were frankly agreed to by the town through the RTM, the Board of Education, and the Board of Selectmen at the time. There had been a request submitted to the Board of Selectmen prior to this board to initiate a legal action. We did hold off on that request until this board was seated so that we would have the benefit of Mr. Littback's expertise and experience as an attorney, as well as give him an opportunity as a newly-elected selectman to participate in an issue of significant importance. So that all happened. We had a meeting on February 22nd, a joint meeting duly noted and posted with the Board of Ed at the Parkway School, where we had the benefit of hearing from outside counsel that was hired by the Board of Ed to advise them as to the merits of their request to reexamine this and reopen this agreement. Each of us had an opportunity to pose questions and learn more than we perhaps knew going in. And since that time, speaking for myself, I had an expectation based upon communications that the Board of Education might have revisited their decision. We subsequently learned they had no intention to do that so as to address their initial requests. We're here today with this resolution. For, I have no more to say on it, but I would like to call upon Mr. Littback, who I want to compliment for taking the initiative early on as a neutral person, not having had any application to this, in reaching out and doing a lot of fact-finding, even talking to one of the principals in this case. And for that, I want to thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, well, Peter accurately describes the background in terms of my coming onboard and him asking me to take a look at it, to be a part, obviously ultimately, of the decision as to what this board should do. He also correctly noted that there was a point in time when we, not just Peter, but all of us, I think, thought that the board might be taking some further action itself. It has apparently determined not to do that, or by inaction, it has in fact not done that. So it puts the ball back in our court. I did, as he said, look at the situation, and let me be clear. I suppose it is clear, but I want to make it abundantly clear, that while it is true that I am an attorney, I am not acting in a legal capacity in this regard. My views are no better nor different than Peter's or John's, and should not be taken as anything more than one person's view based upon my view of the facts as I understand them. And I did meet with one of the principal participants in this question, hoping to find a way to approach this that would not involve on either party's part litigation and adversarial proceedings, but rather a more collaborative approach. I was not successful, and so we are faced with the recommendation or the request that we received from the Board of Education. Based on looking at it, based on talking to people involved, but more importantly, based upon the professional advice that we have received, I could not justify spending town money to initiate litigation at this time with respect to the existing stipulation. I won't go into the reasons, except to say that it is primarily based upon professional advice that we have received. I do not think it would be a prudent expenditure of town resources at this time. So I would recommend that we adopt the resolution, which has been proposed by the Town Attorney, which says that we are not going to do that at this time.
I would thank you very much, Mr. Littback, Mr. Tonner. So the motion has been made. Seconded by Mr. Tonner. Any further discussion? Just to again read the resolution, resolution that the Board of Selectmen does not authorize the Town Attorney's Office to initiate litigation to modify the existing 2003 judgment concerning lighting on the Greenwich High School property.
The only thing I would add to that, at least for me, and I suspect this for the rest of you also, is while it doesn't have to be in the resolution, it is at this time.
Thank you. I concur. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number five is new business. On the agenda today is a request to authorize to approve $1 million of self-insured retention for a personal injury case, Collins versus Town of Greenwich. I believe Mr. Fox, our Town Attorney, is here. This was a case that Mr. Fred Durango, an Assistant Town Attorney, oversaw, and the governing boards of the town, as it works, Board of Selectmen, the RTM Claims Committee, 10 members, and the 12 members of the BET, majorities of each of those boards have to concur in the settlement of litigation. When there is a settlement of litigation, the town has a liability insurance. That self-insured retention is $1 million. So our authorization today is to support the settlement in that $1 million being applied.
We've had multiple discussions with your board and the other boards over the last several months. This is a very complex case, which has involved some 27 experts, 40 depositions all over the country. all over the country, thousands and thousands of documents, who have consulted with our insurance company. We are of the opinion that it is appropriate for the town to put in its $1 million SIR.
Mr. Fox, is it appropriate to just give a little bit of detail in terms of the, the nature of the case? That we, I said personal injury, but do you prefer or not elaborate on it, given that it's not-
I can generically talk about it, Mr. Chairman. This is the case involving the gentleman who was working at a home as a plumber, came out to his truck to get something out of the truck, and a tree fell, a portion, a significant portion of a tree fell on him and damaged him badly.
Right. I think that's enough of a context of it. That's what I was just-
So, the case is being pursuant to all this, settled, and the only issue before us-
It has not yet been settled.
It is in the process of being settled? Or is there an agreement, or?
There is not an agreement. There have been two different mediations which have not resulted in a successful settlement. The matter is now, it was originally scheduled for trial in September, it has now been pushed over by the court to January.
Then, I'm just curious, process-wise, then why are we at this point in this case authorizing the $1 million?
Because as part of further negotiations, the question's going to come up as to whether or not the town is willing to put in its SIR. For purposes of further negotiations, we need to have authority to do that.
I see. Okay. Thank you. May I make one other, and this is more an observation than, than a question or a point, and, and it is not meant to refer to this particular case, and it just occurs to me as, as I'm sitting here, so I'm going to make the observation, which is, we have, I, I think I'm correct when I say, we have had a number of these things come before, since I've been on the board, where we have authorized, properly so in my judgment, the $1 million retention and what have you. And this probably isn't a question for you, but it's an observation. I would guess that our insurance rates are going to be impacted by all this. I mean, we, we can't keep settling, I'm not saying we shouldn't settle these cases, but in settling these cases, we are clearly going to be facing increased premiums, aren't we?
I would expect we would face increased premiums. I would expect we would face an increased SIR.
That's what I would expect. Okay. We, we just ought to be mindful of that, as I say.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I'm not sure where I go with that, other than to note it.
And there are not many cases in which we put in our full SIR. This is one which we think is justified.
But you think that both the premium and the SIR will be increased?
I would expect so, yes, sir.
I think that's a very valid and important observation because that then rolls into our financial planning and budgeting as we look to next year. And so, for people to understand that there are consequences to situations, one of them will be if in fact the SIR is raised, then we're going to have to budget accordingly to have the adequacy of reserves to cover these things.
There are monies budgeted each year to be put aside for these possibilities. And I think there's a distinct possibility that number will have to be increased.
Yeah, on, on both ends, because the premium's going to go up and the SIR's going to go up, so.
Great. Is there a motion?
Also moved.
Moved by Mr. Litback. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item before us is a request to approve a contract from the Harbor Management Commission. This particular request is something specific to the dredging of Greenwich Harbor Channel, if I have that correct. For those familiar, Greenwich Harbor Channel is the area parallel to Steamboat Road in winding up at the, I would say, the foot of Arch Street. Under the resolutions contained within the budget, or in the language within the ordinance for the Harbor Management Commission, it stipulates any contracts to be entered into by the Greenwich Harbor Management Commission shall be first approved by the Board of Selectmen and subject to town's purchasing policies and procedures. This is an item, I just want to speak to its, from an aspect beyond what the Harbor Commission may be speaking to it, and that is, they're looking at opportunities to deal with the disposition of the spoils from the dredge that will occur. And it is a costly undertaking to find locations that are suitable for disposition of this. One of the concepts that has been discussed, I would argue, not novel, but one that I certainly am pushing for as part of another initiative is that those spoils can be used to expand the perimeter of Roger Sherman Baldwin Park. That park is truly one of the destinations for community events. It's limited in size and capacity. This would add the opportunity to expand it and satisfy an important requirement to dredge and dispose of material. So, having these assessments done by RACE, which is the firm that we're looking to approve the contract, which is RACE Coastal Engineering, I think will provide mutual and multi-purpose benefit. With us today is the Chairman of the Harbor Management Commission, Mr. Bruce Angelolo, as well as the former Chairman of the Harbor Management Commission, Mr. Frank Mazza, who is also Chairman of the, is it the dredging Subcommittee?
Mm-hmm.
So, either of you are welcome to come up. I, I have no questions, but my colleagues might.
Okay. Good morning. Maybe I could give you a little bit of a overview here of what our problem is. Greenwich Harbor has a federal navigation channel and also a federal anchorage. The responsibility of dredging these belongs with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've been in consultations with them and with the Connecticut Port Authority, which is where we are looking to get funding to do this dredging. And they said at this time, we think it makes only sense to try to dredge the federal navigation channel and not the anchorage because we're talking about a huge amount of money to do both of these. In the federal navigation channel, we have about 120,000 cubic yards of material has to be dredged. 60,000 yards of this is suitable for open water dumping, which makes it very simple. The other 60,000 yards are classified as unsuitable for open water dumping at this point, which is where our problem is. How do we dispose of that 60,000 cubic yards? The federal navigation channel in Greenwich Harbor is by law authorized to be at the depth of 12 feet. Now, this 12 feet was a depth that was done when it was a commercial channel. There used to be oil tankers coming in and barges and tugboats. One of the things we're looking at at this point is to, the outer harbor, keep at 12 feet and the part, the actual material that is unsuitable is all in the inner harbor. And from approximately Indian Harbor Yacht Club in, we're looking to reduce the depth from 12 feet to 10 feet at mean low water.
What is it currently?
Now, it runs from seven and a half to 12 feet.
So, you would be taking it then from seven and a half to 10?
10.
What you're saying.
Yeah. We've looked at the boats that come into the harbor and the average depth of most of the large yachts that come in are, they draw about seven feet, seven and a half feet maximum of water. We have one sailboat in there that's an old 12-meter class yacht that draws about nine feet. So, that would be the depth at mean low water. So, the only point. That reduces the amount of material that we have to dispose of from about 60,000 to around 30,000 feet. Now, we are doing essentially in this contract some of our due diligence, and we are asking our consultant to look at the idea of perhaps expanding around Roger Baldwin Park as a place to deposit some of the material. At this point, it's just a conceptual idea. You know, the work, if you're going to expand Roger Baldwin Park, that's going to be in your province, not ours. But it's something to look at, and we have to look at all of the different things. The Corps of Engineers is asking to look at all the different means and methods that we can to dispose of this material. And so, essentially, that's what this contract is for, is giving a conceptual idea of what, some of the disposal sites.
My colleagues may well know all this, and so please forgive me if I'm asking silly or basic questions, but I guess there's two questions that occurred to me based on what you said. First, I, I thought you said that the responsibility for dredging the channel resided with the Army Corps of Engineers, but does the cost reside with us?
The Army Corps of Engineers has the responsibility for all the maintenance dredging, but they have a policy now that they will do the engineering and all the administrative work, but in these small harbors, they will not pay for the actual dredging costs. Because there is a trust fund, a maintenance dredging trust fund that federal government has, and it derives its funds from fees that are collected on tonnage that goes into the harbor. So, the Corps of Engineers have looked at this and said, you know, Greenwich Harbor doesn't have any, any tonnage, so there's no fees. So, therefore, they're doing that with every harbor in Connecticut or every harbor in the country, really. If there's no fees, they are not paying for the dredging. So, but they will do all the administrative-
So, so who would pay for the dredging here?
We are looking for the Connecticut Port Authority. The state of Connecticut recognized this problem a number of years ago, and that the Army Corps was not dredging any of the local harbors. And originally, it was in the Department of Transportation, but that moved a couple of years ago and the new Port Authority was set up. And they have funding in their budget each year to pay for dredging of local projects. And this is one of the local projects. And we're working with them, and hopefully, we can get the money from them to pay for it.
Do they have just kind of X dollars, and are we in competition with other, to get that money?
We're in competition with every town in Connecticut that's along the coastline to get that money, right?
Which is what lets, leads me to the, the second question I had, which is, if most of the ships now, seven and a half feet is more than ample, and you're talking about taking it from 12 to 10, what happens if you, and you reduce the unsuitable from 60,000 cubic feet to 30,000 cubic feet? What happens if you only took it to nine, or eight and a half, or some, some lesser number, which it seems, based on what you've said, to be adequate, and yet I would gather would reduce the cost, if not by 50%, by some percentage?
You know, as, as we go down, each foot we go down, we obviously reduce the amount of material that we have to dredge. Again, if you talk to any good captain of a boat, he's going to say he wants water under his boat when he's coming into-
He wants 14 feet.
He wants a lot of water under his boat, right. But, and so, you know, just going down to two feet, we think at 10 feet, it's, it's marginal, but it's enough water at low wa, at low tide for whatever comes into our harbor.
Is it marginal? I, I thought you had said earlier, maybe I misunderstood, that seven and a half feet was what you currently, most ships or even the largest ships that are coming in.
Now, we have seven and a half, there's some spots in the harbor where it's down to seven and a half feet.
Right.
It, it varies as you go down the whole channel. It's up and down in the depth.
But seven and a half, correct me if I'm wrong, seven and a half is, while not desirable, perhaps adequate. If that's true, and maybe it's not true, but if it is true, why wouldn't you just go eight and a half or nine and give yourself a little leeway and let it be?
If I could butt in a second.
I'm sorry.
No, no. Just, the point's well taken, but the, the one thing that I'm sure Frank's going to underscore is that the amount of time it takes to engage on being able to do a dredge is a multi-year project, and it also entails, obviously, convincing the Port Authority to bond, to provide the funding. So, every foot you reduce increases, it shortens the lifespan of the effectiveness of the dredge.
So, you're saying as long as you're doing it, you might as well do-
As, as much as you can.
But it is a balance, because, I mean-
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. 12 feet would be great, but we look, you know, we're making-
And you, you've decided the proper balance is to, okay.
Thank you. Those were good illumination of the points. John, do you have anything?
Just a question. I understand that there is a private organization that is intruding on the channel. Is that correct?
Private organization that-
Is intruding on the, the channel?
Oh, yeah. One of the, one of the requirements that the Corps of Engineers has is that there be no intrusion into the federal navigation channel by either yachts or any types of docks. We have one dock that is intruding into the channel now.
What, what is happening with that?
We are going back to deep and asking them to, to handle that situation because the other one's responsible for it.
Well, by the way, what, just ballpark, if you know, what is the cost of dredging? In other words, what are you looking to the state of Connecticut to give you?
Well, we just, we dredged Coscoab Harbor a couple of years ago, and the cost there was around about $40 a cubic yard for the material that we hauled out. So, we have 60,000 yards of suitable material that can be open water dumping. So, that's about 2.4 million dollars. If we drop down to 30 on the other, that's a question we really don't have an answer to, but we're probably talking about going way up over 100, 100, maybe 150 dollars a cubic yard for that material because it's extremely difficult when it's unsuitable, how we handle it. It means maybe moving it twice, three times. You know, one of the options is you haul it out, take it out of the water and de-water it, and then haul it by land to landfill somewhere. The other is what they call a CAD cell, which means you dredge in the channel itself down deeper, you get suitable material, you take that out and dump it, and then dredge, take your unsuitable material you have and dump it in the hole and then fill it in with some more suitable material. It means handling the material three or four times. It becomes extremely expensive.
If, if it were used for the park, to expand the park, that would tend to reduce the cost, would it not? There'd be less handling, less moving.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your, and thank you for your good questions. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract presented to us by the Harbor Management Commission for purposes of facilitating the Greenwich Harbor dredging.
I just have one question, I'm sorry, which I didn't ask about, about the contract, which is specifically, it, it's basically a consulting contract of, I forget what it was, $10,000. It was less than $10. How long is the contract for? In other words, how, how long do you anticipate them doing their work, this work?
Probably not very long, probably three or four months. It's not a large contract and it's simply-
No, it's not. No, I was just curious what the timeframe was.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for your good work, and look forward to hearing the results. Okay. Item number six, appointments and nominations.
Before you get to that, under new business, and it's not on the agenda, I wonder if I could raise something, and if it has to go over to another meeting, so be it. I was approached by a resident who raised with, a question with me, and what I was told was that people who rent houses for the summer here in Greenwich, and they might have a two or three-month rental, are not permitted to access the beaches or Byron Pool. They're not permitted to get passes to do so. And I was further told that that was by virtue of the selectmen. And I guess my question is, is that true? And if so, why? And I'd like to revisit that if that was a decision that this board ever made.
Well, we do annually set the park fees, and with that, there's the provisional, provisional beach policy, which has to do with the access.
Mm-hmm.
So, we would have to discuss that with the director who lays that out to us. I don't, my recollection on it is situations where you own the prop, so here's, different than what you're saying, but if you own the property, so I own the property, but I don't live here, you're renting it, the benefit to the park is with you, not with me, which seems crazy because you own the property, but it's with the person residing at the residence. So, in this case, I'm curious to know the answer to your query because if they're residing here, they should have some-
Yeah, I'm told exactly the opposite. I mean, that it's working exactly the opposite.
Yeah. Yeah, that isn't my understanding, because this has come up in the reverse-
I got it.
And people, because it sits with all the verification, you know, who has, pays the utility, and-
Yeah, but if someone is renting for the summer, it seems to me they ought to be able to obtain a pass.
I think we-
John, do you?
I agree with that. And also, there's something else that somebody brought up to me the other day, that is very related to this. Somebody bought a multimillion-dollar house, and they weren't able to get a beach pass, because they hadn't transferred their cars and everything else. So, if we're going to talk about, let's talk about that also.
Let's put them in questions, Barbara, to Joe, and we can, we can put on the agenda, but it's not, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to engage a debate on something we didn't post. I think it's fine to do the query. I think it's a legitimate query, and we should get answers to it sooner rather than later, because the summer will be-
Exactly. That's the reason I raised it, because if we take it up at the September meeting, it doesn't do much good.
Right. So, appointments and nominations, we have scheduled today, under item seven, executive session, for purposes of interviewing candidates for boards and commissions. This particular process was inaugurated with this board after checking with the state's Freedom of Information Commission, that in fact, nominations to boards and commissions are very much like hiring of personnel, which the interviews for those are done outside of, outside of public meetings. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for two purposes. The first one we're going to address is the interviews, but then to discuss any pending litigation and settlement of claims, for which, Ms. Hines, I believe there's only one item under the category of property tax assessment appeals. There's one item that we would be reviewing, but the bulk of the discussion will be with candidates who have volunteered for service to town boards and commissions. So, is there a motion? So, move.
Second.
Okay, without objection. Good afternoon. This is a resumption of the Thursday, July 26, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We are reconvening after being in executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation, specifically a real estate tax appeal, as well as to interview candidates for boards and commissions. Reverting to item six on our agenda, appointments and nominations, I call on Selectmen Littback for purposes of making a nomination.
I nominate Philip Dodson to become a member of the ALMS Appeal Board for a term that would expire in June of 2021.
That would be an alternate vote.
Oh, that's an alternate, sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I would nominate Rick Brooks, who is currently the chair of the appeal, to be renewed for a term that would end in June of '22.
Thank you. Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. So, we will proceed then to item seven, and we have one property tax appeal. And for purposes of consideration, I'm going to request Ms. Hines read the item.
Tax settlement is for docket number HHB CV 17-6039312S. It is parcel number 10-1047. There is a proposed tax credit of approximately $4,639 against future tax payments. If the plaintiffs were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $23,739 plus interest and costs.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, without objection. That concludes the business before the Board of Selectmen today. In our next meeting, Barbara-
Is Thursday, August 9th.
Thursday, August 9th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Without objection.